Good evening, everyone. It is June 22, 2020, and this is a legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and we will have a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
And a motion. And a second by Michelle?
Yes.
And Ms. Nichols? Oh, I'm sorry, legislative agenda, my bad. Call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Jack?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
April? April, are you there?
Aye, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And the chair votes aye. That's five to zero. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
So, second.
Second.
A second by Jack, okay. Ms. Nichols?
Aye, can you hear me?
Yes.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the June 1, 2020 work session minutes, the June 1, 2020 special meeting minutes, the June 8, 2020 council meeting minutes, and I do have a correction on that in the attendees, Mayor Jacob Day was not in attendance. I would just like to remove his name before they are signed. And then we have resolution number 3041 declaring that ApartmentSmart.com Inc. is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for their property located at 207 East Market Street. And that's it for the consent agenda.
Okay, do we need to make an amendment on that?
It was a typo, but we could do that if you don't mind.
Okay. So entertain a motion for an amendment to make corrections to the June 8, 2020 council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. So we'll vote on the amendment first. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So now we will vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Second, was that April?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. First item this evening is the award of bid for invitation to bid ITB 20-117. That's the Gordy Road Water Main Extension Construction. Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids from qualified and experienced contractors to furnish all labor, materials, and equipment necessary to construct a 24-inch water main extension from Darwin Drive to Beagle and Park Drive along Gordy Road at a total length of approximately 5,286 feet. The city followed standard bidding practices by publicly posting the solicitation on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. Eight vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of April 15, 2020, at 2:30 PM. The departmental memo provides a recap of the pricing submitted by vendor per schedule. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award this contract to Redalack &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $2,157,930.80 contingent upon council approval of ordinance 2602, a budget amendment of the city's water sewer capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the Gordy Road Water Main Extension Project.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
Okay. Ms. Miller, if you can go to the next one.
Okay. The next item is award of bid for contract ITB 20-132. This is a dump truck. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Waterworks to purchase a 2021 International HV513 triaxle chassis equipped with a 20-foot aluminum dump body through International of Delmarva utilizing a cooperative purchasing contract secured by Sourcewell, contract number 081716-NVS. Per Section SC16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions of the Salisbury City Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance. That's contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation allows the City of Salisbury to participate in cooperative purchasing activities conducted by or on behalf of one or more public procurement units as defined by the American Bar Association Model Procurement Code for state and local governments. Sourcewell was created by state law as a service cooperative and is authorized to establish competitively awarded cooperative purchasing contracts on behalf of itself and its member agencies in education and government. It's a local government unit, public corporation, and public agency pursuant to Minnesota Constitution and the enabling law noted in your council memo. Sourcewell follows the competitive contracting law process to solicit, evaluate, and award competitive purchasing contracts for goods and services. And these contracts are then made available through a series, through the joint exercise of powers law Minnesota statute, Section 471.59 to member agencies, of which the City of Salisbury has been a longstanding member. The Department of Procurement has confirmed with Sourcewell the validity of the contract, including the terms, pricing, and expiration dates, and the prices quoted by International of Delmarva are in accordance with Sourcewell contract prices. There are sufficient funds in the account noted in your packet to purchase the requested truck. The expected delivery will be December 2020. Actually, that's December 2020, not 2021. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to award contract ITB 20-132, International of Delmarva, in the amount of $175,227.78.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
None, thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Miller, if you can go to the next one.
One moment. Quite a lot of pages there. Okay, next item. It's award of bid for RFP 20-107. That's the Engineering Construction Services for the Gordy Road Water Main Extension. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals from qualified vendors to act as the owner's representative for the purpose of providing construction administration and inspection services for the Gordy Road Water Main Extension Construction Project. The Department of Procurement followed standard bidding practices by publicly posting the solicitation on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. Five vendors replied by the due date and time of April 14, 2020, at 2:30 PM, and their proposals were evaluated according to the criteria specified in the solicitation document. The departmental memo provides a recap of the evaluative criteria and the final scoring by vendor. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award this contract in the amount of $141,936 to Whitman Record and Associates, LLP, contingent upon council approval of ordinance 2602.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Mrs. Jackson?
Questions.
All right, and the last one.
Okay. This is award of bid for ITB 20-133. It's three Ford F-350 utility vehicles. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Field Operations to purchase three 2020 Ford F-350 utility vehicles through Hertrick Fleet Services utilizing a piggyback contract. This type of contract is a form of intergovernmental cooperative purchasing in which an entity, in this case, the City of Salisbury, will be extended the same or lower pricing in terms of a contract entered into by another entity, which is actually, in this case, Howard County, Maryland. Contract noted in your packet issued by Howard County by virtue of a public competitive bidding process was awarded on December 28, 2016, and is valid through December 31, 2020. This contract was awarded to Hertrick Fleet Services in response to the solicitation for invitation for bid number 2017-21, new vehicles, Class 1 through 7. Within this contract is a provision that allows any and all public bodies to purchase vehicles under this contract. Per Section SC16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance. That's when contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation therefore allows the City of Salisbury to purchase the items awarded on the Howard County contract noted above. The Department of Procurement has obtained a copy of the Howard County contract and has confirmed its validity, and that the prices quoted by Hertrick Fleet Services do not exceed the Howard County contract prices. The delivery lead time for the vehicles is approximately 20 to 24 weeks. That's the vehicle lead time plus the body install lead time. Funding is available in the accounts noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract ITB 20-133, Ford F-350 utility vehicles to Hertrick Fleet Services in the amount of $139,665.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
And I don't have any. I'll call for the question. All those in favor approving the award of bids, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you in FY21.
Sounds good. Enjoy the rest of your year. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3042, authorizing capacity fee of the city's connection charge to be waived for the development of 206 East Market Street.
Good evening, council.
Have a motion?
Oh, sorry.
So moved. I moved it.
Gotcha. All right. Mrs. Glanz?
Sorry, got excited. So, resolution number 3042, a resolution of the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge to be waived for the development of 206 East Market Street. Whereas Davis Strategic Development LLC has requested a waiver of the capacity fee for the development of 206 East Market Street, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits and the central business district, and whereas the city, sorry, I lost it. And whereas the city seeks to encourage development and redevelopment in the central business district, and whereas the city seeks to reduce the capacity fees for eligible development and redevelopment in the central business district by means of equivalent dwelling unit EDU incentive areas, and whereas, as of the date of this resolution, 37 EDUs have been allocated to 206 East Market Street for Davis Strategic Development LLC pursuant to resolution number 2948 dated on May 28, 2019. And whereas since the passage of resolution number 2948, Davis Strategic Development LLC has expanded its development plans to include the development of the adjacent property in conjunction with the development of 206 East Market Street, which will require an additional allocation of 19 EDUs for an allocation of 56 EDUs of water and sewer service. And whereas the current capacity fee for one equivalent dwelling unit is $3,533, and whereas the capacity fee for 19 equivalent dwelling units is $67,146, and whereas the city council approved a capacity fee waiver process under ordinance number 2258 for development in the central business district, and whereas the Director of Infrastructure and Development reviewed the request and has determined that the project is eligible for the capacity fee waiver, and whereas the mayor reviewed the request and supports sending the request to the city council, and whereas if approved, the EDU allocation for the capacity fee waiver is valid for two years from the time of the signing of the resolution. And whereas the property owner has the option to request an extension of the allocation for two one-year terms if approved in writing by the Director of Infrastructure and Development prior to the expiration of the term, and whereas the allocated EDUs are assigned to the development of 206 East Market Street and cannot be transferred by the recipient.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None, thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
And I don't have any. At this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of resolution number 3042, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Glanz. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for ordinance number 2601 for second reading, approving a budget amendment of the FY2020 general fund budget to appropriate funds for attorney fees.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY2020 general fund to appropriate funds for attorney's fees. Whereas the City of Salisbury's projected the amount of attorney's fees expected for FY2020, and whereas the City of Salisbury's projected indicates an increase of $45,000 in fiscal year 2020 appropriations is needed for attorney's fees in order to meet the projected requirements for legal fees for the remainder of FY2020. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2020 general fund budget be amended as follows. Increase the current year surplus by $45,000, increase the city attorney account by $45,000.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Mrs. Jackson?
None.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2601 for second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion and a second for to approve ordinance number 2602 for second reading, which is approving an amendment to the city's water sewer capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the Gordy Road Water Main Extension Project. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's water sewer capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the Gordy Road Water Main Extension Project. Whereas ordinance 2430 authorized the city to allocate funding for projects in the lawsuit proceeds which appropriated funds for various capital projects. And whereas the lawsuit proceeds pool included funding for the Fitzwater Street Lift Station, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development is seeking to move unused funds from the Fitzwater Street Lift Station project to the Gordy Road Water Main Extension Project to provide the funding necessary for the inspection and construction of the Gordy Road Water Main Extension Project. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. On the revenue side, Fitzwater decreased lawsuit proceeds by $300,000, and Gordy Road increased the lawsuit proceeds by $300,000. Under expenditures, Fitzwater Lift Station, we're going to decrease construction account by $300,000. Gordy Road, there'll be an increase in engineering of $32,000, and an increase in construction of $268,000.
Still need a motion and a second for that. My fault.
Well, I apologize.
So moved. So moved.
Was that a second by?
April.
April, okay. All right. We've got our motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
And I don't have any. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2603 for second reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the purpose of accepting grant funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jack and a second by Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $15,000 and approving a budget amendment to the FY2020 grant fund to appropriate funds for offsetting remote camera equipment. Whereas the Bureau of Justice Assistance, BGA, has an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. And whereas the purpose of the JAG program is to provide states, tribes, and local governments with critical funding necessary to support a range of program areas, including law enforcement, prosecution, indigent defense, courts, crime prevention and education, corrections and community corrections, drug treatment, and enforcement, planning, evaluation, technology improvement, and crime victim and witness initiatives, and mental health programs and related law enforcement and corrections programs, including behavioral programs and crisis intervention teams. And whereas the City of Salisbury Police Department submitted a grand application to the BGA for funding to reimburse expenses related to the purchase of prime camera equipment in order to expand its capacities for remote law enforcement. And whereas the BGA has awarded the Salisbury Police Department funds in the amount of $15,000 for reimbursement of expenses actualized in acquiring remote camera equipment, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department has purchased remote camera equipment for a total of $23,107.68. And whereas, all funds allocated shall be used to reimburse funds utilized to purchase the aforementioned remote camera equipment necessary to expand the remote enforcement operations of the Salisbury Police Department, and whereas the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from expending funds not appropriated or authorized by the council, and whereas the appropriations must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits to the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the City of Salisbury accept grant funds in the amount of $15,000 and authorize the mayor to enter into a contract to accept said funds as outlined above, and be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2020 grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the FY20 Byrne Memorial JAG revenue account by $15,000. Number two, increase the FY20 Byrne Memorial JAG expense account by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2603 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2604 for second reading, accepting grant funds from the, got a motion. Got a second. Or second.
Second. Yes, there's a second. I think April's moved it. Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, and then, okay, then I, right.
Yes, that's correct.
Blake seconds.
Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. Ordinance 2604 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury accepting grant funds from the Maryland State Office of Crime Prevention, Youth, and Victim Services in the amount of $24,200 under the FY20 Police Recruitment and Retention Program, and amending the FY2020 grant fund budget to appropriate these grant funds for payment of retention bonuses to eligible Salisbury police officers. Whereas the Office of Crime Prevention, Youth, and Crime Victim Services has awarded the Salisbury Police Department $24,200 for the purposes of police retention. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department has identified officers in two categories who will benefit from this award based on tenure. And whereas 13 officers with three to five years of service to the City of Salisbury will receive $1,000 as a retention incentive. And whereas 14 officers with six to eight years of service to the City of Salisbury will receive $800 as a retention incentive. And whereas it is the desire of the Salisbury Police Department that this incentive, along with other incentives that the Salisbury Police Department already has in place, will encourage officers to remain employed with the City of Salisbury. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits to the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city accepts the aforementioned grant funds to be spent as outlined in the underlying grant agreement connected here too. Be it further ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2020 grant fund budget be hereby amended as follows. Increase the GOCCP revenue account by $24,200. Increase the salaries bonus expense account by $24,200.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
Just one comment. I'm pleased that we're doing this, and hopefully it will have a positive effect on our retention. Thank you.
Ms. Blake?
No comment.
Mrs. Gregory?
No comment.
Miss Jackson?
No comment.
And I, I concur with, uh, Jack's sentiments. Uh, and at this time I will, uh, call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number two, six, zero, four for second reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Miss Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Five, zero. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, zero, five for first reading, which accepts a donation and to approve a budget amendment of the FY twenty-one general budget to appropriate funds from Delmarva Power and Light for the city of Salisbury's COVID-nineteen micro grant program. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I, I think April be everybody. Mr. Tillman?
Right. Yes, ordinance twenty-five, uh, twenty-six. Yes, can you hear me?
Mark disappear on us? Mark, are you there?
Yes.
We hear you now, yes.
Right. Uh, ordinance number twenty-six oh five is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to accept a donation and to approve a budget amendment of the FY twenty-one general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Delmarva Power and Light Company for the city of Salisbury COVID-nineteen micro grant program. Whereas the Delmarva Power and Light Company wishes to donate up to twenty-five thousand to the city of Salisbury to be used for the COVID-nineteen business micro grant program. And whereas the funds received from the Delmarva Power and Light Company will directly benefit businesses in the revolving loan boundary map that suffered losses in relation to the COVID-nineteen state of Maryland executive orders and mandated closures. And whereas the city of Salisbury Office of Business Development requests that these funds be funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars be placed in the COVID-nineteen micro grant account to provide micro grants for eligible businesses. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that funds of up to twenty-five thousand dollars are accepted from the Delmarva Power and Light Company and be it further ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that city's fiscal year twenty-twenty-one general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the general fund revenue by twenty-five thousand dollars and two, increase the revolving loan micro grant budget by twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
I would. No questions or comments.
We have an amendment.
Oh, okay.
I would like to amend ordinance twenty-six oh five by the following. Line four, strike FY twenty-one general and insert revolving loan. Line twenty-four, strike general and insert revolving. Line twenty-seven, strike general fund revenue and insert revolving loan fund. Line twenty-eight, strike micro grant budget and insert fund expense account. That be all.
Second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Heath. Alright, we will, uh, vote on the amendment. All those in favor of them, of the amendment to ordinance number two, six, zero, five, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Miss Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye on the amendment. All those in favor of approving ordinance number two, six, zero, five as amended, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Miss Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Alright, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, zero, six for first reading. Accepting grant funds from the Department of Housing and Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Got a, got a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-six oh six, a resolution of the city of Salisbury accepting grant funds from the Department of Housing and Community Development, a principal department of the state of Maryland, CHCD, and amending the FY twenty-twenty budget to allow for the transfer of up to twenty-four thousand, four hundred, ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents of the funds of the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, Inc. Uh, care of the Salisbury Folk Festival for processing of approved categorized expenditures consistent with a grant in connection with a folk festival and to allow for the expenditure of twelve thousand, five hundred, five dollars and thirty-four cents for the COVID-nineteen micro grant fund program. Whereas the city of Salisbury in April twenty nineteen submitted an operating assistance grant to the Department of Housing and Community Development for financial assistance in carrying out community development activities, specifically to include assistance with the National Folk Festival to be held in the city of Salisbury. And whereas the city of Salisbury has recently, was recently awarded grant funds of forty thousand dollars by the Department of Housing and Community Development, a principal department of the state of Maryland, and signed the grant agreement on December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. And whereas the CHCD authorized the city of Salisbury to disperse grant funds directly to the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, care of the National Folk Festival, and considered that doing so was an appropriate use of grant funds related to the Folk Festival. And whereas invoices and proof of payment to substantiate funds directly transferred to the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, care of the National Folk Festival is still required in connection with a grant. And whereas the National Council for the Traditional Arts in collaboration with the city of Salisbury announced the postponement of the twenty-twenty National Folk Festival. And whereas the National Folk Festival incurred many expenses for the twenty-twenty festival in advance of the postponement. And whereas pursuant to the operating agreement between the city of Salisbury and NCTA signed in June of two thousand seventeen, the city is responsible for the incurred expenses. And whereas the city of Salisbury desires to transfer up to twenty-four thousand, four hundred, ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents of grant funds directly to the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, care of the National Folk Festival, in order to allow the festival to be reimbursed for those funds as outlined in the CHCD grant exhibits. And whereas three thousand dollars of the grant funds will be used to pay the rent for the office space needed for the Salisbury Folk Festival manager. And whereas due to the postponement of the twenty-twenty festival, there is money remaining from the DHCD grant. And whereas the city of Salisbury already has in place with the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, Inc., a memorandum of understanding to assist in the administration of funds for the Salisbury National Folk Festival. And whereas the memorandum of understanding shall be amended by adding in a specific requirement for the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, Inc. to require it to provide full financial reporting in accordance with the DHCD grant to ensure that all grant requirements are followed and not violated, which will also include indemnification language to protect the city of Salisbury. And whereas the city of Salisbury has submitted a reallocation plan for twelve thousand, five hundred, five dollars and thirty-four cents of the remaining funds to be used in conjunction with the COVID-nineteen business-related micro grant program. And whereas CHCD is currently reviewing the reallocation plans for the remaining funds, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, DHCD grant award of forty thousand dollars is hereby accepted by the city of Salisbury and that the grant fund shall be utilized by the city of Salisbury in accordance with the terms and conditions of the grant to include permission for the city of Salisbury to transfer twenty-four thousand, four hundred, ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents from the grant to the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, Inc. For the use in connection with the Salisbury Folk Festival is outlined in the grant award. That three thousand be transferred for the payment of office space rent for the Folk Festival manager and that twelve thousand, five hundred, five dollars and thirty-four cents from the grant be authorized for use as part of the COVID-nineteen micro grant program. Be it further ordained by the city council that an amendment to the memorandum of understanding with Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, Inc. Uh, to identify the, uh, DHCD grant funds is also approved. And be it further ordained by the city council that FY twenty-twenty budget is hereby amended as follows. Increase the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development revenue account by forty thousand dollars. Increase the office rent expense account by three thousand dollars. Increase the sub recipient SBY A and E expense account by twenty-four thousand, four hundred, ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents. And increase the COVID-nineteen micro grant program expense account by twelve thousand, five hundred, five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Miss Jackson?
No.
At this time, I'll call for the, for the question on the approved ordinance number two, six, zero, six for first reading. Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Miss Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, zero, seven for first reading. Authorizing the mayor to sign a grant agreement and accept the grant from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
Who was the second?
April.
April.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, twenty-six oh seven is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement and accept a grant from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation for the purpose of a tree canopy study and approving an amendment of the FY twenty-one budget to allocate funds for the purposes of implementation. Whereas the city of Salisbury is a partner with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation through a Healthy Waters Roundtable Work Group. And whereas the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and the city of Salisbury have been working together to improve the urban tree canopy throughout the city of Salisbury. And whereas the city of Salisbury desires to prepare a tree canopy study and assessment of tree planting opportunities. And whereas the project will enhance the environment of the city's residents and visitors. And whereas the Chesapeake Bay Foundation has awarded the city a grant in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty cents to provide for the tree canopy study. And whereas the city shall accept the grant in the form of reimbursements and transfer of those funds from the reimbursement account to the capital projects account, now therefore be enacted and ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city of Salisbury does hereby authorize the mayor to sign the attached grant agreement, accepting the project terms for the betterment of the city and its residents and accept the grant of sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty cents from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation to perform a tree canopy study and further authorizes grant reimbursements to be transferred to the appropriate capital project account. Be it further, further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows. Increase the FY twenty-one Chesapeake Bay Foundation grant revenue account by sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty cents. And increase the FY twenty-one Chesapeake Bay Foundation grant expense account by sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty cents.
Any questions?
Mary. You're muted.
Uh, sorry about that. Uh, any, at this time I entertain questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Miss Jackson?
Um, hello.
Okay, I will, uh, call for the question on ordinance number two, six, zero, seven for first reading. Uh, Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Miss Jackson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you all. Uh, Julia, do we have any public comments?
We do not. Um, I don't see any folks on here waving hands or anything, so.
Okay. Uh, do you have any, anything for the good of the order?
No, uh, just thank you for, um, uh, providing these grants. Uh, you know, we're excited especially about the, the police department, um, retention grant. We're excited about that and I know the Colonel is going after, uh, future grants that are like that. So we're trying to take advantage of all the money we can get our hands on to, uh, make sure we continue to stay, uh, an attractive place to work. So appreciate the support.
Thank you. Mr. Heath?
Uh, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things. One, of course, as always, if you're healthy, please, please give blood. Please. Very desperate here on the shore. Um, two, I do know, I just want to bring up and remind everybody, um, it, it, that's in the city council, uh, whatever your role is, to make sure that you're consulting and making sure that everybody has a understands or knows what's going to be moved forward or, or here's what could be coming up next. Um, two, the other thing is too, I, I want to remind everybody to be very mindful that the, um, Salisbury is a very nice place. It's a great place to live and our movement is, is a kind kindness. Be very, very mindful. People hold us in a higher standard. Be very careful in, um, your words and actions. They, they weigh more than maybe if somebody else is going to say it or blow off on social media or Facebook or TikTok or whatever, whatever else is out there. But I don't even know what else is out there. But I just, that's just a very serious reminder. Um, the direction of our town depends on our collaborativeness, our consultation efforts, and it depends on, um, our words and actions to people. Uh, we don't wake up and say we want to hurt somebody today. But if somebody told me that I said something or did something that hurt their feelings, um, I need, I need to, to rectify that. It's nobody's purposeful mission. And be very careful and be very mindful. We are held to a higher standard. People are looking and watching. You can see by the slew of emails um, the kinds of things people say, um, and the things that they, you know, the rhetoric that goes on or you know, they're questioning some things that we don't understand. But it's up to us to find a way to understand and find a way to respond. Um, and that's all I have to say for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Mrs. Gregory?
Um, not much other than the usual. Just be kind, please, 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 please wear a mask out in public. We are not through this coronavirus. I know, you know, i- it feels like it's been forever, but we're, we're only a few months into this and we really, really, really need to be mindful of, of keeping our, our friends and family healthy. So if you go out, the mask is not for your protection, it's for everybody else's. Please wear a mask when you go out.
Thank you very much. Miss Jackson?
Well, first and foremost, I would like to thank you all for the love that you showed me during the death of my great grandson. Um, the plant and the flowers and everything, they just warmed my heart. But I also want to touch on some things that in, since this year has started has been really bothering me with this council because we've been very, very close and we've been very communicative. And here lately, we haven't been doing that. And I'm kind of upset about it and I wanted to wait until the work session to say what I'm going to say, but I don't like the point of us not being notified of things, the city information that we have to hear it via the news, our social media, Facebook, or even the radio stations. We have to hear other things that we should know. or social media, Facebook, or even the radio stations. We have to hear other things that we should know before our constituents come to us. We should know this information and our constituents are coming to us, asking us questions about things that we don't know, first don't do not know about. Um, second of all, um, having things done in the city and everybody's not a part of it doesn't really work for me. Um, just like the Black Lives Matter, street naming just was one, one of a couple things. And then putting Camp Hope in a residential neighborhood without even informing the residents that it was gonna be there. That's another thing for me. I'm a district representative. And if something is happening in my district, I feel as though I should know that when it's happening or before it happens, I should know. Because I need to inform my residents and my constituents. And when they come to me, when I have to get a call on the phone or when I have to um, see on Facebook or somebody's telling me, Miss April, what are these tents doing here? And I have not a clue. That's an insult to me. Because as a district representative, as a city council representing the city of Salisbury, we should know every step the city is moving forward. I love this city and I'm gonna tell you, I love all council members. And Julia, Andy, and Mayor Day. But we have to do better than this collectively. We have to do. Because we started out this, and I know COVID has caused a strain on everybody. God knows I know because I'm one of the people that it attacked. But we have to do better than this because I personally do not want people calling me about stuff I have no information about because then it makes me look like, well, what are you doing on the city council if you do not know what's going on in your own community? Those are one things and that I, I, I just, I, I just, I'm, I was really upset. Ju- Julia and I have had a talk. Jack and I have had a talk. Um, and like I said, there's no hatred mouth and discontent in my heart because I'm not that person. But we have to do better. When it comes to the city, we have to pull together, tighten up our bootstraps and do what we need to do to to continue the legacy that this city council in the last four years, last four and a half years have done. We need to continue that. So let's be forthcoming with information. Let's not be, uh, having hidden agendas or any of that thing. Let's do what's right by our city. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Couple of things, I, I want to recognize and give a special recognition to a Delmarva Power for their for their donation to the COVID nineteen micro grant program. Uh, I, I think this program is going to be great in assisting our local businesses uh, that have struggled through this. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I sound like a broken record, but please support our local businesses. Please support our local restaurants. Uh, the, these are the people that employ the people in our city. So I want to thank everybody. A couple of announcements, not announcements, but just reminders. There is no meeting next Monday. Uh, it is a fifth Monday, so there's no meeting on the twenty-ninth. Our next meeting is gonna be the July sixth work session. Uh, and then our next, uh, legislative session will be, uh, will be July thirteenth. And, uh, there is a public hearing, uh, at the July thirteenth, uh, council meeting uh, for an annexation, uh, agreement and an annexation plan. So, uh, just for public consumption and everybody else. Uh, please stay safe, uh, love your neighbor. And, uh, you know, we love our city. I love this council. I love everybody that's on it. We're a family. And, uh, I want to continue the momentum we have this year and keep everything going. And, uh, uh, thank you all for your comments and, uh, I, I take them to heart and I hope everybody does too. So with that, we are adjourned and hopefully see everybody in two weeks. Stay safe.